Good afternoon. Welcome to the St. Martin Parish Council's Special Meeting of October 21st, 2025 at 4:25 PM in the Carol J. Fugillay Meeting Room of the St. Martin Parish NX Building. Please silence all cell phones, remove all hats. The public may comment upon any item which requires a vote by the St. Martin Parish Council. I ask that you fill out a request-to-speak form located in the back of the room. Once completed, you are to bring it to the Sheriff Deputy who will bring it to me. I'd like to call the meeting to order with a prayer laid by Deputy Council Clerk, Ms. Brooke Devoe.
You shouldn't tell, Devoe.
We, the members of the St. Martin Parish Council, having been chosen to represent the people of the parish, beg of thee, Almighty God, to enlighten our minds so that our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and in doing fulfilling also the holy will on earth and in heaven through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Jean-Baptiste, would you read this in the pledge?
To the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Melisson, Ms. Alexandra, Mr. Corville, and Ms. Narcisa, excuse. Everyone else is present.
Special business. Council to meet as Board of Adjustment to consider granting an exception to Rhonda Ducey to build a single-family dwelling on property zoned I-1 Light Industrial located at 4406 Catahoula Highway, St. Martinville.
I need a motion and a second to grant the exception. I have a motion by Mr. Louvier, second by Mr. Clay. Call for the vote.
Item B, Discussion and Review of Resolution Number 25105-RS that was passed during the regular meeting of October 7th, 2025, selecting and authorizing the submission of state capital outlay budget request for the year 2026, 2027.
Uh, Parish President Delcum, uh, it's my understanding that all the, everything is ready to be submitted on the resolution that we passed on the last. According to the resolution, no changes were made. Everything is good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Mr. Del, do you have any comments, questions?
I contacted FPNC. Capital Outlay Projects are under the umbrella of the FPNC of Baton Rouge. Talked to Mr. Chris Haftec, who then sent me to the Office of Capital Outlay. All capital outlay projects go to this office for review.
Mr. Derek Angelos is the head of this, this department and in describing what had, uh, what was being requested, first and foremost, after doing the due diligence of Parish, St. Martin Parish Government, we have not, not that I've, did I find any previous project that the Parish took place in a capital outlay project for a municipality. Uh, we may have done some, something under the heading of direct appropriation, or it may have been done under the heading of uh, bonds, recreation bonds, et cetera, uh, but nothing has ever been done in regards to a capital outlay project. So in talking to Chris Haftec and in talking to Derek Angelos for future, uh, FYI as to how these projects are going to occur and what's going to happen, in the event that the Parish wants to provide and to, uh, submit an application for a project for a municipality, uh, it has the right to do it. However, that project, in the event that this, in this case, the municipality, uh, has an ID number and has done and is, uh, verified with the state to do capital outlay projects, in the event that the project is completed or is, is, uh, is conditioned and funded, that project then goes under the name of the municipality. The municipality would then need to file its own application. And when I say that it goes under the heading of that municipality, uh, again, the municipality needs to file the individual ECourt application. Uh, the municipality, due to the location and project use of funds, is responsible for the 25% match and the municipality, uh, will be the project manager. At that point in time, the Parish as applicant is taken off of the role and the municipality takes 100% ownership of the project. Just FYI for future projects in the event that this would want to take place again. And this is through FPNC and the Office of Capital Outlay.
Yeah. So the project is going to be submitted only to the Parish?
Submitted under the Parish. Now, what has happened and, and, and my concern in this is that it had never been done again. Uh, not in the, 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 since Mr. Sean has been here, nor, and I did additional research and I've never found a capital outlay project that had been done under the heading of Parish Government. So, as I had no conversation nor, uh, any direction with the city of Brobridge, I didn't think it fair to the city of Brobridge if they did not have full disclosure of what is going to be responsible for them, which is, they would need to file their application, they would need to then come up with the, with the match money and the project as such would be under their total responsibility. Uh, again, going into the thing, I did not know if Parish Government would be the project manager, if project, if Parish Government would, uh, need to come up with the match, or as I have had some complication in the past with some projects in Brobridge, whether we would be given a hold harmless within the CEA, within the, the, uh, endeavor agreement. So none of these things had been addressed, nor, nor had come to a head, nor finalized. And I really think that, uh, in putting the Parish into any kind of contractual, uh, position, that we need to first investigate and due diligence to make sure that everything is done according to law, crossing Ts and dotting Is. So, that being said, the application is going to be filed through the Parish and in the event of funding, uh, then in the event that Brobridge goes through all of their application process, would be put into the name of Brobridge.
So that information that was given to you from the FPNC, could that information, could we get some enrolling from them that we can share with the rest of the council for future?
I talked to Mr., Mr. Angelos, Mr. Derek said, listen, you're not going to find it per se in a prescribed statute. He said, this is, in the event, he says, the way you're describing it, he said, this is very unusual. And he verbally gave me this, uh, but he said that he would be, he would welcome any phone calls or anything that would be needed. Uh, if anyone else would want information, I can dictate what he gave to me and you could call Mr. Angelos and he can verify anything, any and everything that he gave to me in this matter.
Okay. Maybe we could get that known to Shantel in case Mr. Melisson would have some questions. He could, he could check, you know, follow up on it. So I guess for the future, we don't have these issues again.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Item Six, Resolutions. Summary Number 111-RS, A Resolution Approving the Annual Certification of Compliance for the Off-System Bridge Replacement Program for 2026 for St. Martin Parish.
I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by Ms. Jean-Baptiste. Second by Mr. Clay. Call for the vote.
No, it's the Jean.
Mr. Pori. No, it's good.
Hold on. Give me a minute. If, if it was on the wrong screen, this vote is on another screen.
You want to redo it for the right screen?
Yeah. I think it's 04. I'm sorry, we're gonna redo that one.
Yeah, read it again.
Summary Number 111-RS, A Resolution Approving the Annual Certification of Compliance for the Off-System Bridge Replacement Program for 2026 for St. Martin Parish. A motion and a second.
Yeah, I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by Mr. Clay, second by Mr. Pori. Call for the vote. And just, just for the minutes, just reflect that we had a damn proper slide on. So there was no vote taken and we redid it.
Summary Number 112-RS, A Resolution Selecting and Authorizing the Submission of State Capital Outlay Budget Request for Year 2026, 2027 and to repeal Resolution Number 25105-RS that was passed during the regular meeting of October 7th, 2025.
I need a motion and a second. Feels well I like a motion. I need a motion and a second to adjourn. I have a motion by Ms. Jean-Baptiste, second by Mr. Louvier. Call for the vote. This meeting is adjourned.
Immediately after.
Okay. We're on with Public Works?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the St. Martin Parish Council Committee Meeting of Tuesday, October 21st at 4:37 in the Carol Fugillay Meeting Room of the St. Martin Parish Government NX Building.
Item One, Mary Bogey and Grayson Walsh with Public Service Commission's Office, Jean-Paul, Jean-Paul Cousin's Office to discuss the Energy Efficiency Program.
Ms. Bogey?
Hello. First, I want to thank you guys for allowing me to come here and speak to you. I'd like to apologize on behalf of Commissioner Cousin and my colleague Grayson Walsh. They could not make it tonight. Um, but as she said, my name's Mary Elizabeth Bogey and I work for the District Two Public Service Commission Office. Um, for some of you that might not be familiar with the Public Service Commission, it is an agency that is responsible for regulating the rates and services of Louisiana utilities, whether it be electricity, natural gas, water, and wastewater. Um, the mission, the commission's mission is to ensure these essential services are safe, reliable, and provide fair, reasonable cost to the consumers. Our service, our, sorry, our office is a direct advocate for you guys and the commission when it comes to any type of utility matter, whether it's resolving a bill issue or addressing service interruptions or even clarifying customers' rights. You can contact our office and that we will have it handled for you. You won't even have to worry about it from there. Um, but tonight, I am here to introduce to you guys the, what I consider one of the more impactful things that the Public Service Commission does, and it is the Public Entities Energy Efficiency Grant Program. This program was formed to help local governments, schools, and other public facilities reduce their energy costs, upgrade outdated equipment, and reinvest those savings back into your community. To qualify for this grant program, your, the, the entities must be a service of either Entergy or CLECO. I think a lot of this parish is actually under CLECO. Um, and I wanted to let you guys know that we still have a lot of CLECO dollars that we can give to St. Martin Parish. You are our only parish with CLECO. Um, and I'd love to work with somebody from the council to help identify which entities are still on CLECO that we can get done. Entergy as well. Um, I just know that this is the primary spot for CLECO. But through this program, qualifying entities can receive grant funding at no cost to you guys for energy-saving projects, whether it be lighting retrofit, um, HVAC replacements, building controls, boilers, heaters in schools or buildings, all the above. Um, and the projects are funded directly through ratepayer-supported energy efficiency programs that have been applied, approved by the commission, and implemented in partnership with your local utility providers. Since I began working on the Public Entities Program in District Two, we have actually awarded $2.2 million to St. Martin Parish alone. Um, and it's an incredible investment that has helped local facilities cut their energy waste, save money, um, and, and lead by example in sustainability and responsible governance. Um, I am happy to connect with anyone from the council, happy to connect anyone from the council to one of our top contractors so you can hear their side of the story and the impact that they've seen throughout this process. Um, I know that some of our guys are, are really into it and they, their goal is to make you guys happy, which is ours as well. Um, but it's, the, the goal is simple, that public, to help public entities lower their operating expenses and improve infrastructure. Um, each of you has a one-page handout that outlines key details about the program, eligibility, funding, structure, contact info, and next steps. The one thing I forgot to add in there is the application deadline for 2026 will be January 31st of 2026. Um, but thank you guys and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'll also have a list of the places in St. Martin Parish that we have completed if you guys would like to hear that as well.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Mr. Louvier?
It's not really a question. It's, uh, so it would be Ben, Cory, and you, right?
No, well, my district is mostly Slimco. I have very little.
And then all of Brobridge is, uh, equal.
Okay.
He's not here. That's, uh, that's.
Just a ream. You have a comment?
Yes, sir. Just before you have to speak, I am working with, uh, I think it's Ike Morris.
Yes.
This morning, I started the actual CLECO portion. I was told that we have funding that's available for the CLECO. So we've identified the buildings. We have pulled 12 months of, uh, utility consumption. That'll be for the application. The application should be completed by the end of the week for submission to them. And he also made me aware of the Entergy deadline of January 31st. So we plan on, uh, being involved in that.
Those buildings, which, where we do, which buildings will we be looking at?
The agricultural building in Brobridge, the Brobridge Fire Station, the Cota Homes,
Ruck Building?
Ruck Building and basketball court. And there's one other that, that, that gets bothering. But I have four sets of utility bills that we pulled today so that we can begin that process. So I'd like to visit with you and give you a card after.
I'll, I'm, I have to head back to Baton Rouge after this, but I'll give you one of my cards before I go.
I'll share my, uh, the information you gave us.
And, and my cell phone number is on those cards, so feel free to text me. Um, I'm in and out of the office, so having my cell phone is, is, is better than calling the office line for me.
All right. So, thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Y'all have a good night.
You too.
Item Two, Mr. Wilbert Ledet Jr., Founder, President of Ledet Legacy Foundation LLC, Two Address Council.
Ms. Ledet?
How y'all doing?
Good.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Wilbur Ledet Jr., the founding and executive director of the Ledet Legacy Foundation, chartered by the State of Louisiana. It's a nonprofit organization with a 501(c)(3). Our foundation would like to recognize the following persons who made this historical project reality. Annette Conwell, State of Louisiana Director of Tourism, Emily Aldwin, Department of Tourism, Herman Fusilé, St. Landry Parish Tourism Commission Director, and the late St. Martin Parish Councilwoman, District Three, Sidney Mae Durain, for naming the street next to the historical landmark site, Promised Land Drive. Our mission, honoring and preserving our community history with the continued support of the first-ever Black family business historical site, the Promised Land Community. My narrative is, the story and glory of our Promised Land Community was awarded a Louisiana Marker because of my several years of research study. I have a copy of the Louisiana Marker. It is situated right in front of the historic People Deeds Club Valentine. The, the line drawn situated is the Parish Government and the state. It is not on the property itself. It's in front of the historical People Deeds Club Valentine. Let me read my narrative because it took me several years to develop this. I have been working over this until it, during the pandemic, it sent me to the hospital. I wasn't monitoring my sugar level. During the pandemic, I ended up in Lafayette General. Didn't know where I was until the doctor told me. He said, you're in Lafayette General. Your sugar is 790. You should have been in a, like, every coma all, all, all day. He said, what you been doing like that? I said, I've been working on my historical project. And I said, guess what? When I woke up, I didn't know where I was. But I got that feeling. I went to the gate. My late parents them sent me home to finish this historical project. I know that. So let me read the story and glory with the Louisiana Marker about Promised Land Community. In the 1800s, a white farmer named John Dugard owned this land. African-American who built this community in the 1950s were people who worshiped the Bible. Promised Land Community name was adopted by the resident. In the 1950s, Ledet Bar, Dance Hall, and Grocery Store was developed by Wilbur Ledet Senior, veteran sergeant of World War II, and Mildred Charles Ledet. The family business provided the necessities of those living in the community. It was classified as a site for social entertainment and grocery shopping. The dance hall featured many great musical artists such as Clifton Cheyenne, Rockin' Doozy, Barbara Lynn, Patrick Henry, also Cory Little Pop Ledet, J. Paul Junior, Roy Anthony, Tucker, Oscar Noyce, and the Do-Droppers, Furnas and the Tenders. From the 1970s to the 1990s, Ledet Bar, Dance Hall, and facility was officially named People Deeds Club Valentine on, by, People Deeds Club Valentine was owned by, keep in mind, it is currently used as a multi-purpose club for meeting, dances, and concerts, and parties, and festivals. This is a picture of the marker itself. It made history in St. Martin Parish. This is the first family business landmark site in St. Martin Parish. On behalf of my foundation and supporters, I would like to make three recommendations to St. Martin Parish Council and hoping at its next regular monthly meeting that my three recommendations will be provided with three adequate commendations. The declaration or proclamation of being the first Black family business landmark site since 1950 in St. Martin Parish, District Three, as of now, still in operation by Wilbur Ledet Jr., Historical People Deeds Club Valentine, Promised Land Community, also known the Terry Senti, the Holy Land. Number two, requesting finance assistance for this historical project for economic development and tourism. Three, a bust of my late parents at this historical landmark site depicting his contribution of disadvantage and underprivileged community. I have collaborated with Herman Fusilé and to see what could be done because he's in St. Landry Parish and he helped me start this project over several years ago. Now, keep in mind, you know, according to scientific studies, in order to receive a Louisiana Marker or any marker, you got to have factual information. And we was accepted with a Louisiana Marker because of my countless hours spending on this particular project. I'm not asking you, all I'm asking you, look into what you can do for the foundation. At the next meeting, I would like to come by and hopefully you can address the commendation that I read for his recommendation. And again, on behalf of the foundation and supporter, thank you for putting me on your agenda. Have a blessed day.
Thank you, Ms. Ledet. Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ledet, the only thing, the only, uh, the only problem I see with some of this right here with some of the stuff that Jackson for. So like, I'm not sure, that would be through administration. You'd have to get with the Parish President on that deal. But I think on the tourism side, I don't think we can, we can't use public funds for private property or private entities or anything. So I'm not sure how much we could do on that. But I do know like if you're having an event, if you're having some that, that needs advertisement and stuff, I know we do do the banners and we do do some advertising and sponsorship and stuff like that. That could maybe be done through tourism. But I'm not sure on some of the requests that you're asking for that we could fully fund that through Parish Government. That would be my only question and concern. That would be a question for administration probably.
Then what I would do is, uh, I would, uh, with legal counsel, take a look at each one of these items and address each one individually to see exactly what is within the parameters of St. Martin Parish Government that we can do. You know, if we can do them all, fine. If we can't, but we got to stay within the letter of the law. And I'll get with Parish, with the, uh, the Parish Attorney and take each one individually and we can answer each and every one of them for you.
Okay. Cause I collaborate, I understand what you just said too. It's true what you're saying and also the councilman. And, uh, I was talking to Herman Fusilé and, uh, he's a St. Landry Parish Commissioner. And a lot of time, they, uh, they had a lot of matching grants that they could accommodate through the Parish Government. Now, we have, uh, I have a grant right and everything. Uh, but we have applied for several grants, which we're still waiting. But we lost, uh, because of Trump administration, the federal program, we had applied for $100,000 grant. And being that they were all terminated, we lost it. Now, St. Landry Parish, they got their $100,000 because prior to before Trump administration started cutting the program out. That's how they got their $100,000. I wish we would have at that time received it, but you know, that's other avenue. But what I'm saying is that, Mr. Uh, President Delcum, just look into what you can do for, as my recommendation. A lot of time, you can have matching grants. And that's what I said before. It's a nonprofit organization and my organization headquarters is in People Deeds Club Valentine. So what it is, is that's where my nonprofit organization headquarters is at. So that's why when I had my, I received the Louisiana Marker, that's why when I had it situated in a situation where it was right on the parish and the state line, because I knew private business, you cannot really get that many, uh, grants. Okay. And the bottom line is, I appreciate that you, uh, And the bottom line is, I appreciate that you, whenever you give me some information, invite me on the board again. And I know the process because what you just said, I did collaborate with Herman Fusilay because when he was working for Daily Advertiser in the music department, he helped me start this project along with the late Sidney Mae Durain.
Mr. Ledet, have you had this conversation with Ms. Norrisis? I think she's your representative on the council in that area.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I came to the, this is my second time. I came, a good thing I knew the young lady over there, the time that Guy called me. Because Guy called me when he ran. I did campaign 100%. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm straight forward. As far as when we look at our country, we got the misconception of democracy. It's supposed to be government for the people and by the people, not for personal interest or favorite party affiliation. So we got a misconception and I did submit a brochure to each, to Vincent, also telling you. But one thing I've learned, you got people take politics so seriously at a point that if you do not campaign for them, they will not submit to your recommendation. That is sad. That's why I say when you look at democracy, government for the people and by the people.
Man, okay, the reason I asked the question is she's the councilwoman in that district. I just wanted to know if you had had the conversation because like we do proclamations in like Mr. Clay's district. We usually go through the council members and we get it done through there. I was just wondering if you had ever brought this?
Yes, because the thing is, I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm from St. Martin Parish, retired businessman, teacher, coach on all level. I am a legend on Lady Eddie Robertson, the winning football coach in the United States. And recently, the National Association of the Women University finally recognized me as a legend. I am a legend through Eddie Robertson's staff. But what I'm saying is this, it seems like we take politics out of proportion, for personal gain.
Mr. Ledet, I don't want to cut you off on anything, but I mean, I really don't have a discussion about politics in here.
Okay.
I think what we can do is just, Mr. Pete can handle it through his administration. He'll see if he can address the three things that you asked for.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item three, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing Parish President Pete Delcum to sign an administrative change order in the amount of $267,198.54 decrease for the Herman Dupree Road Improvements Project by Elliott Construction LLC.
Mr. Castillo, you wish to discuss? You want to discuss or Mr. Delcum?
This is just on that Herman Dupree Project, Herman Dupree Road, Beulah Rose. This was the overage that we would be getting back, putting back into the coffers for our future road projects. In fact, we had a meeting this morning. We'll be moving forward with the 2025, 26 road projects. This will be put back into the kitty, so to speak, and moving forward with our projects.
Thank you.
Item four, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing Parish President Pete Delcum to execute change order number one for the St. Martin Parish Pre-Position Disaster Debris Removal Contract with Series Environmental Services Incorporated.
This is just a renewal with an addendum. We have these pre-positioned contracts with Series and with the monitoring company. They work very well. We've used them in the past with hurricanes and so forth to where after the storm is complete, we are contracted, pre-positioned with a contractor to come in boots on the ground and start the cleanup. It's worked perfectly in the past and this is just the renewal. If we can get it passed in November, it was due in January, but we're just getting a step ahead of the game to make sure we stay on top of this thing.
Thank you.
Item five, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing Parish President Pete Delcum to execute amendment number two for the St. Martin Parish Pre-Position Disaster Debris Monitoring Contract with Thompson Consulting Services LLC.
Yeah, this is just in conjunction with number four.
Thank you.
Item six, questions from council members on parish issues.
Mr. Louvier? Mr. Clay? Mr. Polly? Jean-Baptiste? No questions? We're good.
Item seven, completed constituents' work orders per request forms for September 2025 were submitted.
This meeting is adjourned. St. Martin Parish Council Administrative Finance Committee Meeting of Tuesday, October 21st, 2025 at 5:01 is now called to order.
Item one, discussion of ordinance summary number 1523OR and ordinance amending the St. Martin Parish Government Pay Scale.
Questions from the council?
No. So just for clarification on that, I had called Sean just to ask you. So we voted a few months back to eliminate some steps on the pay scale, right? And so all this is, this is just putting them in the bracket that they belong. It's not giving pay raises during and changing the pay at all, right? It's just moving them into the bracket now that they're going to move into since we eliminated those lower scales.
Correct. If you remember some years back, Mr. Cedar started this process because at that point in time, we had pay rates that were below minimum wage.
Right.
So we've gradually tried to move things up without causing too drastic of a change where we have to move everything around. So we've done it a little bit at a time and now we're almost to the point where maybe a couple of three steps away from being where it's in a place where it can stay for a number of years.
Right. So just for the council's clarity, all it is is that what we eliminated on the last scale is just to move these people into the brackets that they need to belong in to now, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Item two, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing Parish President Pete Delcum to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement on behalf of St. Martin Parish Government with the Louisiana Department of Veterans Affairs.
It says done annually.
Item three, Parish President's report.
Mr. Delcum?
Yes, you have in front of you the listing of projects that presently working on Cypress Bayou, Kool-Aid, La Salle Drainage Improvements. The RFIs are in process. Alsea Bonam, planned inspects are prepared and pending USACE approval. Funding on all, everything has been funded. This project here, we have submitted two additional avenues of funding, a FEMA project that could be accepted and a repurposing of a project in Stevensville that is not going to occur. So we're presently trying to get, we have $3 million of it that has been purposed through FEMA and we're trying to get the additional $2 million also put into the FEMA program. But irregardless of that, the entire program is funded. We're just waiting on all of the information from GOMESA to start project and to proceed. Petroleum Parkway, the engineers are out there. They're in the process of doing drainage and moving lines and so forth in regards to that. Once all that has been completed, then the actual road project will start. Spanish Trail, happy to announce that BNSF signed off and the crossarms are presently functioning and we're in the process of getting the barricades out. So the use of that road will be, in the process of initiation, it should be being used in the very near future. We'll get a time schedule on that, but I'm hoping it's just a matter of cleaning up the area and getting the barricades off. Joe Day Canal Improvements, the bid opening is December 10th to get that project started. Box Car Road, they are in the process of driving the sheet piles. The initial project timing was about three, three to five pilings per day and they're doing seven to 10. So they're going to be ahead of schedule. Everything's going as planned and looking forward for that project moving on and completion. I know that's been a thorn in our side for a year, but we've got it started and it looks like everything's going okay. Dahmalonso Road, of course, we've done the engineering but have not moved forward with anything from there yet. Sales tax number one road improvements, we had a pre-bid meeting this morning. Engineering and process has been completed, advertisement has been completed. The bid opening on this is going to be October 29th. So we're actually opening bids on this on the 29th. And from there, we give a notice to proceed and we're going to start the road projects. They will probably focus on those roads that are not in heavily agricultural areas. We don't want any complications with the sugarcane harvest that's going on now. So we've talked to the contract and we don't see any problem with that. Elise Drive, they are in the process, our project, Public Works Management. The lateral goes from the interior of Brobridge and to the exterior. And we have in the process, as we speak, we're cleaning out the exterior to where when this internal project is complete, the whole lateral has been taken care of. The materials have been delivered, so we're hoping within the next week that we can start the project. Henderson Control Structure, they are in progress, making very good progress. The water is down. The weather has been perfect. So we're also looking for some expedited progress on this. Delcum Road Bridge, they poured the asphalt, correct me if I'm wrong, today. So that bridge should be opened hopefully by the end of this week. Once we get the bridge engineer, Hugh Wall and Associates, to come and sign off on it, we will be removing the barricades and that bridge will be back open for use. Water consolidation, just got word, the BO Company has signed the lease. Tomorrow, I'm sorry, next Tuesday, we will be having a meeting of the Water Board, the regular meeting. They will pass the resolution and that part of the lease will be signed. That being said, we can then move on to the intergovernmental agreements between Catahoula, the St. Martin Parish Government and the city of St. Martinville. We will be able to start the process of bidding on the contracting of the well. We're in the process of and we'll be meeting with La Zucca on Thursday, hopefully finalizing some of the progress on the water tower. So a lot of things happening there. I'll be able to get you up to date in regards to the water consolidation once our meeting is completed next week. So at the next meeting, we should be getting some more information on this to bring to your attention.
Any questions, the council?
Mr. Delcum, how about our building? How about the addition of the building annexation? Have you heard anything back from FPNC or?
On our addition?
Yeah.
We're waiting on Mr. Guidry in regards to, he has sent out to his engineers and to his architects in regards to finalizing that final spec. Once that's done, we'll be giving that to FPNC. I'll get with Mr. Guidry and see if we can get a time schedule as to when that will be complete and when that will be given to FPNC. I'll have that at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Item four, statements of revenues and expenditures and balance sheet for September 2025 were emailed.
Everyone should have received that. This meeting is adjourned.